Good evening, citizens of Lewisburg. And welcome to the October meeting of the Lewisburg Town Council. We'll begin by having our road call. First of all, our clerk is not here tonight due to illness. And we'll have Sean give the road call, please.
Mayor Neal.
Here.
Councilman Dover.
Here.
Councilwoman Woods.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stein. Councilwoman Wright.
Here.
Councilwoman Baker.
Here.
Councilman Clancy.
All right. And Reverend Dustin, could we ask you to give our invocation this evening, please?
So, I'm here. We're going to be praying to thank you for your life and opportunity to join the best of the good. We do, Lord, pause for a moment. Now, we give you a special thanks, Lord, for life and for work, for responsibility. May I ask you, Lord, to be faithful to these things, Lord, if you may be a praise to these things. These things are asking these things today.
The pledge of allegiance, please. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number four is the adoption of tonight's agenda. Before we begin, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda tonight for various, for four line items. Item number nine was to be a public hearing on zoning. We would like to amend to remove that from the agenda. The developers called and asked us to take that off the agenda. So, we're going to amend it to drop that discussion, which would have been a public hearing tonight. Okay? So, item number 11, which was a notification for unsafe buildings. We've been asked to remove that item to November. That was an item that was requested by Mr. Satterwhite, who was also ill tonight. Item number 12, to amend the amusement and entertainment portion. We want to amend to remove that, to move that to the November, table it to November. Item number, okay, what's that?
Item number 12.
Okay. And item number 12, which is application for amusement and entertainment, that is to be tabled, to, I'm sorry, to be removed off tonight's agenda. And body number 19, amend the auditors, number 19, the draft for the audit for the 2023 and 2022. The auditor tonight had car trouble tonight and asked us to amend it for tonight. Now, here's what we can do, and I ask the council. Now, we can also amend this to have a special meeting, a special call meeting, to discuss this issue. I would think that would be the most appropriate thing. As soon as the auditor gets with us, I would like to call a special meeting to get that information out to the public. So, it will be up to the council to decide. I would in favor, upon hearing from him, that we set a special meeting before next month's meeting to get that information out to the public. Yeah, all right. Okay. So, are we in agreement? We can make a motion for that.
Dr. Dover, did you want to add?
Yeah, yeah, we, we, yeah, I'm gonna add to you. Now, we'll get that after that. And then, item number 19, we'll make that, I want to add one. And this is the amend the agenda to add a discussion about the community station across from the post office there. And I want to put that on the line item 19A for discussion tonight as well. Okay. You've heard the amendment. Could I get a second?
I would like the second amendment, pause on the draft and to add for the community.
Okay. And in addition to that draft, have a special call meeting as soon as that information is available to turn to the public.
I think we have to set.
Okay, do we have, didn't it? We could set that then to the.
The information exists, he just couldn't make it.
Yeah. So, so that's why I want to have it done before the November meeting, to get that information out. That is why I would like to have a special call meeting as soon as that information is available for that draft, to get that out to the public. Any questions on that, the council? Could I get a second for that?
Right.
Okay, it's been moved in properly. The motion has been made to amend the items, what we've just said, in addition to adding a special call meeting as soon as the auditor provides his information to us. And we would then get that out to the public. So, could I get, it's been moved and property second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you. Now, can I get a motion to approve the agenda with the amended items?
We approve the amended.
Okay.
I found this on the web.
It's been moved in properly second that we amend the, approve the amended agenda for tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, council. Item number five, approval of the minutes. The minutes for our September 9th, 2025 regular meeting, September 15th, 2025, for the departmental heads meeting minutes, as well as September 16th, 2025, the public hearing minutes. If no adjustments or comments relating to those minutes, could I get a motion?
I move to approve the September 9th to September 15th, September 15th meetings.
Okay. It's been moved in properly second that we approve the minutes for September 9th, 2025, September 15th, 2025, and September 16th, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, council. Line item number six is public comments. This is the time where you, the citizens, can come before us and share any comments that you may have that you want the council to be advised of. You have three minutes, and I have on the list, first name is Neff, Ms. Joyce Neff.
Joyce Neff, 203 John Street. I want to begin by saying congratulations to Mr. Mayor. And to say that he and the citizens saved us $10,000, that's pretty good. And the other thing I wanted to talk about was the trash pickup. I'm hoping that never again do we talk about outsourcing it, that my trash is picked up on time. And we were about the only town where they do go in the backyard to pick up the trash can if necessary. And I think that's something pretty special. Also, if, I'm sorry. How about that? Also, if we talk about outsourcing it, there never has been any conversation about what we would do with our sanitation workers. And I'm all in favor of as many people as possible that have local jobs, live locally. That includes our teachers, our law enforcement, our firefighters. And so, please, let's keep the trash like it is and keep our workers working. And when it comes to the workers living locally, it means that we need to continue to pay attention to affordable housing. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Paul Volteer.
How you doing, mate?
Doing wonderful, thank you.
Paul Volteer, I'm at 215 Tanglewood Drive. Here to talk about opposition to the rezoning, which has been tabled again since about, didn't want to show up. I sent Charlie each a letter a couple of weeks ago in opposition to this. Few issues is the traffic. We already got traffic issues. I don't know where all these people come from. We got two ways in the neighborhood and two ways out, the same thing. It's, that ends at the end of Pine Wood, there's nowhere to go. And cars pass all hours of the night, still don't know where they come from. I think they think it's a cut through. The DMV is stacked up every day, all day. Mr. Mayor, you drove past there, it's ridiculous how bad our business. Another issue is, I'm just gonna touch that. And now, infrastructure and drainage, if they pan on putting 53 units on that little piece of property, they gotta build that whole hazel wood, which is the sewer line behind it, probably about 30 feet up in the air. Which, for Scott lives right across the street from that, he's gonna have a wall because the retention pond's right across from, looking at the map, right across from his house, he'll be looking at a dirt wall with a retention pond, which, if it ever fails, hopefully it won't, it's all in his house. They can't even cut the grass on the sewer line because it's so wet because of the flooding from Fox Creek, that they can't even get past my house on Tanglewood without sinking the tractor. So, grass back there on down the sewer line, all the way to Hazelwood from my house, is four feet tall. You can't even see the deer back there, it's so tall. And I just, they just cut behind my house and stopped. And I took a picture of it. I mean, you could see the deer's head walking away from me back there. I mean, they come up to my fence all the time. So, I mean, they, they're right there. But the drainage issue is gonna be the biggest problem if they build right there because they gotta build that land up, cut all them trees down on the backside of that lot, and it's gonna cause a whole lot another mess. And it's the same thing we always, and once they start construction, the vibrations of them digging and cutting them trees down, gonna ruin our foundations. It's gonna vibrate, and I've had condos built across the pond from me, once already. And all of our houses on the other side of the pond from it was infested with rat, field rats, that they drove out of that. So, get your rat traps ready because if they start building there, we gonna have infestation because I know they got rats, everything, because we got foxes, raccoons, and everything hunting them back there. And it's, it's the quality of life back there, it's a nice gated, not gated, but secluded community. We have older people that's been living there 30 to 40 years, 50 years, some of them. And it's gonna ruin the area. I mean, they spoke at the last meeting about the charter school, how, how it was a nightmare, the traffic and everything else. It's gonna create a mess. You're looking at 53 units, that's at least 100 people, 100 more cars in that back little area. And it's, it's gonna be chaos trying to get out. And plus, if they build the medium where y'all said they gonna build on Bickett Street, right at the Sandalwood entrance, we won't be able to get out. We either have to go to Nash and take a left, or we gotta go to Bickett and take a right and make a U-turn and come all the way back. Or cut through Carly Sea, which is a nightmare right now because you can't even get through to Carly Sea far to get to the light to get out of the neighborhood. So, just imagine adding another 100 people, over 100 people and 100 cars right there. And I appreciate the time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next is Mr. Willie Mullins.
My name is Willie Mullins Jr. I live at 119 Pine Wood Circle. First off, I'd like to congratulate you, Mr. Neal, being reelected. I voiced my concerns about the rezoning, the last meeting I was here for. And the only thing I want to do tonight is to ask the question. When I was in school taking accounting, I had a law class. The lawyer who taught it, I went to high school with, by the way. But he said, when a lawyer goes to the courtroom, the one thing that he does not do, he does not ask a question that he does not know the answer to. So, I'm gonna ask this question. Would y'all like pick the two apartments in your front yard? That's all I wanna say.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins. Good afternoon.
Congratulations, Mr. Neal.
Thank you.
I live on 119 Pine Wood Circle as well. I've lived there for 37 years, and my husband has resided there for 50 years. And my concern tonight is the rezoning for Sandalwood Avenue. The rezoning request does not align with the existing comprehensive plans for the area, period. It does not align with the plans that have been in place a number of years for the land use development and infrastructure. Consideration should be taken for the existing community in the event of hazardous conditions that could potentially result in flooding. Catastrophic flooding is rare, but we hear about these conditions created across the country quite often now, where the floodwaters rise at unprecedented levels, endangering lives and possibly resulting in devastating damage, in which includes long-term community disruption. Just a few months ago, down in Springville, two lives were lost in just a matter of minutes. The waters rose, people washed away, in just a few minutes, their lives were changed and their families' lives were changed. When Fran came through here in 1996, my backyard, my property line, is probably approximately 100 yards from the riverbank. The waters exceeded the riverbanks, came up over the power lines, and into my backyard, probably up to my waist. So, we know what it's like to experience that. If you've never experienced it and watched those waters rise, it will be hard for anyone to comprehend because everybody thinks that they're immune to those situations. But the riverbank right there, 100 yards from the car free line, we don't even have any storm drains in our neighborhood. 119 Pine, well, Pine Wood Circle is a cul-de-sac. Cul-de-sac originates from the French, and it means it's the bottom of the bag. If something catastrophic were to happen, it would be next to impossible for us to legally get out of our neighborhood with the infrastructure that we already have, 54 new units, 100 more cars, the density we already have with the traffic. It's just, there really no words to describe it unless you've lived it or been back there. I would strongly encourage, since it's been amended again, for every council member here, every town employee, everybody in this room, to take 10 minutes out of their day and go back and look at the area and look at the density and what we've got to challenge. Two retention ponds, if something were to happen, then those retention ponds were to overflow, Mr. Curtis, he's a goner. Paul, he just moved into the neighborhood, I'm sure that's a disappointment for him. It's just, there are a lot of concerns that we have that you would just have to go back there. But Mr. Neal has been back there and looked, but I would strongly encourage everyone in the room to go back there and look at the density that it would create. Minimal infrastructure back there, in my 37 years, nothing. I'd say not minimal, I'd say nothing. Nothing's been done back there, no storm drainage. What in the world would we do if we had something catastrophic? Something would happen. And after this is over, if the rezoning is approved, the investor makes a huge amount of money. The builder, they get the project complete and they move on, and everything falls on the channel, Lewisburg, and the residents in our community. So, it's just, we would be the ones to suffer the consequences if something catastrophic were to happen. So, tonight, I implore everybody to just make a responsible decision when that time comes, if it comes. And I also encourage everyone in this room to go back there and see what we're facing. Because not, like my husband said, not one individual in this room, in the town of Lewisburg, in the county of Franklin, relish the idea of the development. I thank you for your time. Oh, and last but not least, the developer, Trevor Holmes, the review state that they have issues with plan deviations, so that's obvious. They've already approved for 25 units, and now they want to turn it into over 50 units, including poor landscaping and insufficient erosion prevention measures, which is our main concern. Thank you.
How y'all doing this evening?
All right.
I've got a whole bunch of things to ask, but it seems how the contractors down here and most of the boards down here, I'm gonna probably reserve those questions for when we resume. I do have some things I wanna ask. I'm really curious about how you're gonna get 25 units in when none of that's been passed to start with. I wanna see some environmental impact, I wanna see some traffic studies, and none of this has been done. And I don't mean to be racist, but yes, I do. And so, you know, this is where I live, I've been here for over 30 years. I like where I live. And I don't want a huge unit weaved in there and. And I don't want a, a huge unit winged in there, and we've got issues with the, with the apartments down there as it is. Well, we can stand as that. Y'all have a nice evening.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Curtis. Ray Staff. Staff.
Good evening, Ray Staff. I live at four oh five Sunset Avenue. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor, on your reelection.
Thank you.
And excuse me for having to read from my notes. Didn't commit to memory. At the August twelfth meeting, town council adopted the resolution to implement an updated comprehensive solid waste collection policy for a twelve-month trial period. One month later, the council heard four or five citizens raise concern about new waste collection policy. Specifically, the inability for some elderly and physically challenged persons being able to get the large trash can to the curb. And two, a concern that some citizens generate more trash than what can be put into the trash can with once-a-week pickup. Following a town council brief discussion of the matter, council moved forward with a resolution to return to the old status quo waste collection policy. I was shocked to see town council abandon an opportunity at least to consider a more efficient and cost-effective waste management policy. Some ques- questions and issues that need further discussion, in my opinion. One, what are the cost factors or other concerns that led to the proposed change in the first place? Two, there was or is a clear majority of the citizens that supported the new proposal. Why abandon the needs of the many for the desires of a few? Both can be easily satisfied and possibly with a substantial cost benefit. Three, can the town actually afford to continue spending at the status quo level? The citizens don't know because there's no transparency on the actual unsubsidized costs for the various proposals. What is the criteria being used to justify the labor-intensive backyard pickup? How much subsidizing does the current waste disposal plan receive from the general fund? What necessities, what necessitates twice-a-week, twice-a-week pickup in Lewisburg at possibly double the cost? Ninety percent of the communities throughout the state and in the country do once-a-week curbside trash pickup and once-a-week curbside recyclable pickup. Most communities charge a fee for an extra trash can or provide a service of rolling a trash can out to the curb when necessary. These services should not be mandated on all citizens, where the vast majority do not require the special service. For those who can't afford the extra fee, consider looking at community volunteerism or subsidize those in need. I respectfully request the town council just reconsider their recent decision and give this important issue a little more scrutiny. I recommend a breakdown of the various trash recycle, recyclable pickup options be presented to each resident through a mailing with a detailed unsubsidized cost breakdown. The mailing should request a coded response via the website or a hot card copy response via town hall, which should probably be followed with a town hall meeting to discuss the pros and cons of the various options. A final comment, our sister townships in the county do curbside trash and recyclable pickup once a week, as does most every township in the city and, and cities inside the state of North Carolina. Consider taking best practices from Franklin, then Youngsville, Roseville, Wake Forest, and a number of other communities, and let's make Lewisburg a role model. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Scott Strickland.
Good evening, Captain.
Good evening.
At eighty-four thirty-five, highway six. I have to get around this lake. I think you can relax. But anyway, I just wanted to thank you, uh, Mayor Neal, for winning the reelection, and, uh, it's always a pleasure to come speak to you. You know, I spoke to you a couple of months ago about getting a ramp down at the river. Here again, we have another incident down there. We need to, we need to invest in the time to, to look at this. After talking to people with the state, it is a doable thing. And we just got to get the blessing of the council to do it and find the funding to do it. And so, the more and more, as things happen, it's gonna be used more because accidents are gonna happen on the river. And so, from looking at the size of boats that we used, that was brought in last night with a sixty-horse motor, that's a long way to tow it to the river, not having a way to get back down to the river. A rubber ramp is easy to get into the river because you can tow it. But when you got motors and stuff that's oversized, you know, that's a lot of weight. Uh, even if you got six or seven men carrying it. So, I'm here, like I said, I'm here again as being a mercy, uh, disaster response, you know. That's, our job is to help prepare towns to look at the outcomes. Again, if we have a flood, they say, well, it might do the boat up. Well, you still got a hard surface that you can back on knowing where the, where it is to get in there. And so, we had to save Rob years ago at the lake and didn't have a one ramp, and then we made a ramp. After you go to drownings and stuff, you figure it out, and you make it work because time is the essence. The quicker you get in there, the quicker you save a life. Most of the time, it's a recovery, but, you know, the quick, like I said, the quickness is the, what we're looking at, getting access. But again, you know, I, I appreciate everything y'all do. I appreciate y'all supporting the Bunner Cert as much as you do. On October the thirtieth, I know y'all, the town's doing theirs on the thirty-first, we'll go at Walmart doing, uh, Halloween with Kathy over there, trying to do what she wants to do and with, for the town citizens and stuff for the kids. And, uh, we also are looking forward to trying to help y'all do the thirty-first thing. If, if you need any assistance, let us know. And that's what we're here to do. Uh, my group is looking ways to help the towns. You know, Youngsville created a cert group, which they do Youngsville. Our group is sponsored by the commissioners, so we have the other access that's left in the county. So we're trying to help everybody get the bang for the buck, you know, and learn about what we do and how to prepare. It, it's not only for the community. It's for businesses. It's for everything, you know, learning CPR, learning, learn how to prepare if a disaster happens in the middle of the day. You know, it could be at the hospital, it could be in the town hall, you, you know, knowing what to do. So, reach out to us and let us, let us come talk to you and, and let us present what we got. And I appreciate, like I said, everything y'all do. Thank y'all.
Rachel, Rachel Dixon.
Hello, everybody. Rachel Dixon, two eight North Main Street. Uh, super excited to be here because I love this town. In the whole year that we've lived here, it's just been really wonderful. This is a wonderful community. Um, I appreciate, I just wanted to start off by saying congratulations, Mayor Neal, and just tell everyone that I appreciate the job that you guys do, especially the people that are on our staff. Even though not very many of them are here tonight, I know your jobs are super hard, and I just really appreciate everything that everyone does. Um, I just had a couple of things, and I was thrilled to find out that one of them was gonna be added to the agenda tonight. Um, I called Mr. Satterwhite to inquire about, um, renting the community, what is it called? The, it's a gas station, yeah, the community station. I was kind of shocked at the price. He said that the town had decided it would be seven hundred dollars because of the minimum of eight hours to rent it because of the, it didn't make sense for somebody on staff to come out and clean, uh, for say a two-hour rental. Um, so I was going to suggest maybe giving that as an option and then maybe having like a security deposit because like I would clean it probably better, like I would clean it super clean. I wasn't planning on having a party. I was planning on having, well, I mean, like life's party, so it would have been a party, but it would have just been very like contained. Um, so, but it sounds like that, that's gonna be a discussion tonight, so I'm really glad about that. Um, another thing I bothered, uh, Mr. Satterwhite about were, uh, was the speed limit on the streets that are off of Main Street. Um, it was brought to my attention that there are really no speed limit signs. Um, and we, again, I love living here so much, and I love walking our sidewalks, walking our dogs, walking my two-year-old to go to my parents' house on Sunset. And I just worry every time I do that my daughter is not going to stop at the street and is gonna get hit by a car that is like flying down church. Um, and I just thought people were really breaking the speed limit. But then I realized that there is no posting of the speed limit. And I know, um, Mr. Satterwhite was gonna look into that because he said typically there's a sign that says the town's speed limit is this unless posted otherwise. And if it is that, like, church and Sunset and all the other streets that come off of Main are thirty-five, I would propose that they not be thirty-five anymore because that is a residential area. I mean, I don't know what it is and, um, on the other streets either because I don't drive them, but it sounds like a difficult situation for you guys, so I hope also we don't do what everyone is against here with the fifty-three. I vote against that too. So, um, that is all I have to say, and thank you guys so much for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Just, I like to just, just say in it, you know, regarding the, uh, the Tanglewood, I, I did go over for, to just view the area, and I would just like to encourage the council that we take a joint trip over to that area and see, uh, the, the, see the landscape itself. That way, as for me, when I visited, I, you know, I had some questions as well about the density there. And I think just a pure visit there would, uh, put it in a much clearer perspective of what our citizens are talking about as opposed to the, the maps and things that we get. And, uh, so perhaps maybe we can set a time where the council take a group trip over there and just look at the area in question. Okay. All right. Item number seven, as I said, special presentation. That's, we could call Just Serve and come forth, man.
So, thank you, Mayor Neal and Lewisburg Town Council for some time this evening on behalf of Just Serve. Um, my name is Diane Ferrari. I reside in Youngsville, and I am Regional Representative of Just Serve. I'm joined with my local colleagues and, and fellow volunteers. This is Angela Thornton. This is Carrie Parrish.